Okay, welcome everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, that being the regular council meeting of Warwick Township. June seventeenth, twenty twenty four, and as always, three thirty starting time. I remind council of disclosure of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest. Does anybody have one at this time? Seeing none. Also like to welcome everybody who is joining us through our Warwick Township YouTube link. And now I'm gonna do the acknowledgement of ancestral lands. We acknowledge that the township of Warwick is located on the traditional lands of the Anishinaidhee, as well as the many indigenous nations in Ontario, whose footsteps have marked them for centuries. We also wish to acknowledge that we are situated on Treaty twenty nine and Treaty twenty five territories, signed by Chippewa chiefs, and we offer our respect and gratitude for these lands. Let's go council to number five if we could, and that's the minutes from the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty four meeting. Does anybody have any questions on those minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to pass those minutes. Council Westgate is moving, seconded by councillor Manning. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And I don't believe there's any business arising from those minutes. Madam Clerk? Thank you. Let's go to seven if we can, scheduled meetings and events. Council, you see everything before you. Anybody have any questions on any of those? I will make a note that there was a request by myself to change the date from the September sixteenth meeting, but now my schedule has changed and I am good, but I appreciate everybody looking at their schedules and trying to accommodate it, but we're now good. And then we have B, and that's the other meeting events, and that would be the one from the AMO conference coming up on August eighteenth to the twenty first. Let's go to number eight on our agenda if we could, council. Let's go to councillor commitment dates. Does anybody have anything they wish to add at this time? Seeing none? Very good. Thank you. Councillor's items. I'm gonna start with you, councillor Westgate today, sir.
I have nothing today.
Thank you. Councillor Morris?
I also have nothing today.
Councillor Manning?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out to Ryan and his staff that we had a couple of ball tournaments that I was able to bartend at, and the Parks and Rec staff were doing a fantastic job up there. They were attend of the whole weekends we were there, so I just want to point that out. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you, councillor Manning. That's good to hear. Deputy Mayor Kellenberg?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. I do have a couple of things. The one thing I want to bring to council's attention, I'm sure everybody's heard about, there was a cabinet shuffle done about a week and a half ago by the Ford government, and the unfortunate part for us, every time one of these seems to happen, it seems to hurt us somehow, some way. In this case, Minister Smith, Minister of Energy, who we had a very good relationship with, and lots of good discussions about bringing natural gas to Warwick Township, has now been shuffled, and he's going into education. And now Minister Lechi, who was the Minister of Education, has now become the Minister of Energy. So I've already reached out through MPP Bailey, and Amanda's already reached out through staff to try to have that first discussion with the new minister and talk about our priorities here and how important natural gas is to us. So we are working on that. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some face time with the new minister soon. So that's being worked on as we speak. The other thing is that Stephanie reminded me today that the very first farmer's market put on by AZ Events happens this Thursday night from five to nine. I believe it's back in the Ball Diamond area unless it's inside because of this lovely weather we have, Stephanie. Am I correct? Thank you very much. So that's all I have. Let's go to number nine. Let's go to staff items if we can. We have a verbal update from Amanda Gobbles on Canada Post discussions. Madam Clerk, please.
Thanks, Mayor Case. I wanted to just advise council that the township of Warwick has continued to advocate on behalf of complaints submitted to the municipal office to Canada Post related to delivery and had a few individual resolutions for members of the community through that process, which is great. We have also followed up with Canada Post on their anticipated timelines for the change in our delivery method, being a change from requiring the P O boxes on mail delivery in Watford. And unfortunately, there is no update on timeline or further commitment on pursuing that project due to staffing resource constraints in Canada Post. So we will continue to advocate, but I wanted to share with council that that advocacy was happening, although I had no update at this time. Thanks.
Thanks, Amanda. And yes, we've managed to help a couple of repairs the last little while, and that's a good thing, but it's too bad that we gotta continue to have to talk to Canada Post about providing better service to our community. But I want to thank Amanda and our staff here for some good follow up the last little while with them, and we'll continue to try to push Canada Post to do the right thing and provide good service to the people of our community. I'm now gonna call on Amanda again. We're on B, and it's a verbal update from Amanda on Blue Water Power shareholders' finance benefits. Amanda, please.
Thank you, Mayor Case. I wanted to share with council, I thought this was important for you to know about our relationship with Blue Water Power. As a shareholder of that organization, we recently attended an annual general meeting, and actually Mayor Case made a request that the total returns to shareholders throughout the life cycle of the corporation be shared. And the municipality to date has benefited over one point three million dollars, just based on being a shareholder of that organization who continues to do a great job for our community. Just wanted to also highlight that on our agenda for council's awareness.
Thank you very much, Amanda, and it is good to see that the investment made by others before almost all of our time, councillor Westgate was there back in the day when that happened, has done, has done very, very well, considering I think it was a six hundred and some thousand dollar offer to buy the Watford utility at the time, and you can see what it's turned into, and we still have all our shares intact and our ownership of that organization, plus all of these dividends that are paid yearly. So we are lucky that we have a good company in Blue Water Power that we're part of. So thank you, Amanda, for that. Can I get a motion to receive and file the written portion of Amanda's verbal report? There's a written portion from Deputy Mayor Kellenberg, seconded by councillor Morris. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Amanda, you're not done yet. C, a verbal update from Amanda Gobbles on AMO delegation requests. Please, Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor Case. I also want to share with council that for the upcoming Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference, the township of Warwick has submitted four delegation requests with ministers for that conference. One with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks with Minister Kanjin on the proposed expansion at the Twin Creeks landfill, providing an update on behalf of the community, as well as the Minister of, Ministry of Energy on natural gas expansion continues to be a priority. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing specifically on some planning guidelines related to development inland surrounding active landfills, as well as OMAFRA and our file on municipal drains and CN Rail and our ongoing dispute related to charges for municipal drains. Of course, we haven't heard anything back. Those were just submitted recently. But as the conference approaches in August, we will keep you posted on if any meetings were approved and prepare accordingly.
All right. Thanks again, Amanda, for that. Anybody have any questions on that? Everybody understands what we're trying to do there? Perfect. We're gonna skip over timed events if we could. We'll skip over ten. We're gonna go to eleven. And that's accounts. I'm gonna start with the GL report. Did anybody have any questions on the GL report for today? Seeing none, I'm gonna go to accounts payable. Did anybody have any questions on the accounts payable today? Well, councillor Morris?
I've just won Gen Care for thirty two thousand. I take it we had to buy a generator? In the budget, wasn't it? That's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure it was the same one. Okay, thanks.
Hey, anybody else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve both. Councillor Morris is making that motion, seconded by councillor Manning. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Let's go to our consent agenda if we could. Number twelve. A to C. Does anybody have any questions on anything from A to C? Yes. Deputy Mayor?
Just on B with the cemetery minutes, part of the minutes was the shed out there. Just wondering if we should take a closer look at how we can maybe get it back into up to speed, because right now we're not using it, so I'm just curious where we're at with that, or if we even started that process.
Amanda, please.
Thanks, councillor Kellenberg. Great suggestion. We have had some preliminary discussions and will be working to obtain pricing, but we have not received such pricing yet. But the plan is to evaluate the cost for both repair, as well as replacement for like or or something that is adequate for our needs, and then kind of compare from there. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. No other questions? Yes, councillor Manning?
It's not a question, but more of a, just a congratulations on oh six oh eight there, the County Lampton Heritage Champions. So our nominees, James's, Mary and Paul James, were awarded the Heritage Champion, one of the twenty seven of the awards. I attended, and it was a fantastic ceremony put on by the county, and I'd like to just say congratulations to the James on that award.
Yes, thank you, councillor Manning. It was very well done. The county did a great job of it and very well deserving folks. Okay. Anybody else? I entertain a motion to receive and file then, please. Deputy Mayor Kellenberg and councillor Westgate, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Looking at our time. So what we're gonna do, councils, we're gonna go back to delegations and timed events. I don't know if it's Alex in the waiting room? Okay, I'll let you maybe give a... Alex, can you hear me? Okay.
We're obviously having some difficulty with our video. Also, if you haven't noticed, it's not lining up.
It's one of those days. We'll blame, we'll blame it on the heat. So, is Alex in? Alex, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Good, good. Well, Alex, welcome. Alex is joining us. He's with Garrett Pickfield, and he's got the draft annual TRT report presentation for us today. Alex, the floor is yours whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll be efficient with council's time here, and thank you again for having me. So I did provide an update memo to council. I just want to hit on some of the high points and, of course, leave any opportunities for council to ask questions. So as with every year, the township's peer review team has undertaken a review of waste management's very large report of what's gone on in the landfill, which comprises a number of scientific reports, air quality reports, engineering reports, water reports, all sorts of things. Our team reviews it. They assess a couple of things, including are there any exceedances from what's supposed to be happening? Are there any contravention concerns, or are there any opportunities for improvement? Those kind of things. So I'll start by saying that overall things this year are quite similar to last year. There are some, some good things happening. Overall, the landfill is being well managed. And council will remember, or the councillors that have been on council for a few years, will remember that a few years ago, we started this pattern of having a meeting between technical consultants, between Waste Management and between the Townships team. So the idea was, in terms of the timeline, just as a reminder, the landfill releases their large annual report. After that, they sent us a copy of it. The TRT reviews it. So that's the township review team, reviews it and provides some comments. Now, in the past, we just provided comments. Waste Management provided a reply, and we sort of continued on. But what we started doing a few years ago is building in some consultation between the technical experts before Waste Management replies. So in other words, the townships consultants, we provide a report, the draft report that council is seeing. And then we say, listen, Waste Management, before you reply, let's just have a meeting so that the air quality experts, our air quality experts can talk to your air quality experts, try and explain what they're seeing, see if we can resolve any of these things before you provide a response. That has been very effective in past years. It has continued to be effective last year. I would say, you know, confidently, gone are the days where the TRT would provide a number of comments, and you know, many of them would not be addressed by Waste Management. I would say most of the comments are addressed by Waste Management, and I think a big improvement there is because we're able to have those meetings and communicate them and try and get a bit, a bit of back and forth. So in general, that's been going well. There are a couple of things that the TRT noted that we have noted in the past that there, there isn't a change to, so I want to pull those out for council, just to give them an update. One of those is leachate mounding. So just as a reminder, leachate is just the term for water that has been impacted by a landfill. Basically, rainwater comes down, hits the landfill surface. There's all sorts of things in a landfill. The water picks that up. And that water with some particles, some chemicals, that's called leachate. It has to be managed. And essentially, what the TRT is saying is that there's a little bit too much leachate in the landfill. So there's a little bit too much of this water in the landfill, and we would like to see more of it removed. Now Waste Management is removing more of it year over year, which is great. But unfortunately, more of it is produced year over year, and that's normal with any landfill. As a landfill physically grows in size, as you can imagine, there's more surface area, more rain can fall on it, so the amount of leachate typically will go up. That part's not abnormal, but the TRT feels that Waste Management could be removing more leachate. The reason that matters is because the higher the leachate goes, it gets closer to the surface. And if there's too much pressure or too much height, the concern is that it could, it could leak out and spill out through the surface and cause a contaminating event, and that's what we're trying to prevent. So I expect that when the townships consultants meet with Waste Management's consultants, they'll probably talk about that and see if they can find a solution, see if they can agree as to what is the right amount of leachate to remove, those kinds of things. Another one that we see recurring is total suspended solids. So total suspended solids, it's just what it sounds like. It's a measure of how many particles there are in water. There's no mandated target for the landfill, so it's not like they have to achieve a certain amount of particles in the water or less. But the Ministry of Environment encourages the landfill to meet a target of a hundred and twenty milligrams per liter. We have historically seen exceedances in this, a lot of them, and some pretty significant exceedances, and that's similar this year. So by way of example, in March of twenty twenty three, there was an exceedance where it was twelve thousand milligrams per liter, which is, you know, exactly a hundred times what we're trying to aim for here. I expect that during the technical meetings, we'll get an update as to why these targets continue to be difficult to meet, and hopefully some potential solutions. I've attended the technical meetings, so you know, I attend them, and representatives from Waste Management attend them as well. We just sort of watch to see what the scientists, essentially, the technical consultants discuss. So from my observations, I think those conversations have been quite helpful. They've shared some good ideas. But it seems that there are still some exceedances, so I'm interested and hopeful to see what the conversation looks like this year. Maybe there'll be some different ideas to try and, try and tackle that. I also want to be clear that in these meetings, it is not the case that Waste Management is saying, oh, yeah, these are these exceedances. We don't, we're not worried about that. That's definitely not the case. Their consultants, you know, see these exceedances for total suspended solids, and they're coming up with ideas to try and address them. So that could include things like bales of hay are used in ditches, so that when water flows, the bales catch some of these solids. That's just an example. So they are absolutely being proactive in trying to solve this problem. And I expect that it'll be a collaborative discussion to see if there's a way that we can try and lower this. Another one that I'll touch on just briefly is, is dust. There have historically been dust exceedances at the landfill. Our team has noted some this year as well. We've consistently recommended real time dust monitoring, which, again, is just what it sounds like. So instead of taking a sample now and then, real time dust monitoring would, would capture a more of a constant picture of what the dust levels look like. And I think that the TRT likes that because it can help pinpoint what is the cause of dust, right? Is it from machinery? Is it from sweeping? Is it from something else? So that's our recommendation. In the past, when we, when we recommended that, Waste Management has said this is something that, that we'd like to look at through the environmental assessment process. So as they're considering the landfill expansion. And I expect we'll have a conversation about this to see whether that's the appropriate time, whether now might be a more appropriate time. So council will see an update on that when we come back with the annual review in September, I believe. And lastly, I just want to give an update on the automobile shredder waste. I don't mean to characterize this as something that has come up in the past that we haven't seen addressed. This is just one I want to provide an information update. So last year, sorry, let me back up. Automobile shredder waste, again, it's just what it sounds like when cars are wasted, when they, when they become garbage, they're shredded into small pieces. It kind of looks a little bit like confetti, I guess. And that is landfill. It's of particular interest, I would say, because there's some chemicals in cars that you have to think about. But more importantly, at this landfill, the pieces are quite small. And they have the tendency to get stuck in vehicle tires. So you can imagine a waste vehicle is coming onto the landfill, they're depositing whatever they're depositing, it doesn't matter. But on the way back, if they drive over this shredded fine waste, sometimes they can get stuck in the treads, and then as they increase speed as they go on the highway, it can sort of fly off, and that's, it can be a problem. So you can see a little bit of this on the road. So last year, our update was that this shredded waste was not being used as, as cover. It was being landfilled as garbage, but it was being covered over by other things to prevent it from getting stuck in vehicle tires. And sorry, I just noticed when I was preparing for this, a typo, excuse me, in our memo to council, which I apologize for, on the automobile shredder waste, I'm not really sure how that happened, but essentially the update is that the use of automobile shredder waste resumed in twenty twenty three. And the Ministry of Environment is keeping a close eye on it. In one of the reports, for example, they note that it was, quote, "becoming an issue" in March twenty twenty three. So this is something that the ministry has kept a close eye on. In previous years, our technical consultants have recommended ceasing its use as cover. But this year, the team is recommending just that it be monitored to see if there's any of this track out. So monitor it, see if there's any waste being, you know, flung out of car tires on the way out. If there's not, great. If there is, we need to revisit this and potentially consider something like a water quality monitoring program. So that, again, because the issue is twofold. One, waste that should be in a landfill, not in a landfill, that's something we want to prevent. But there are some chemicals that we're concerned about in automobile shredder waste. So if there's a lot of it where it shouldn't be, in other words, outside of the landfill, it, it might make us think that we'd want to recommend monitoring water quality if it's escaping when it shouldn't be. And lastly, for this summary, before I'm open to questions, is that the number of complaints received by the landfill is down this year? But there still were twenty four complaints, and twenty three of those were related to odor. So it's still above historical averages. And we think this is a good opportunity to resume a conversation with Waste Management about how complaints are managed, and if there's any way that we can improve that. We had a conversation like that a couple of years ago, and it was very successful, and it seems like now is a good time to resume that and have a check in. So in terms of next steps here, that's, that's sort of an update as to where things are at from a technical perspective. We have some recommendations in our memo to council.
Alex, maybe before we get to that, just ask council, anybody had any questions before we go to your suggested resolution? Anybody have any questions of Alex on what he stated thus far? Seeing none? Okay, Alex, sorry, go ahead.
Nope, no problem. So just before I get into the recommendation, I'll just remind, remind council of the next steps on this. So in terms of next steps, what we've provided is a draft. It gets sent to Waste Management in draft if council approves today. Waste Management will have a while to review it. We'll have this technical meeting with the township consultants and Waste Management's consultants. Waste Management will, will provide us back comments in writing. And then we'll have one final opportunity to, to finalize this report and provide some updates to council. That'll come in September before the report is finalized and published. So the, the point that we're at now is sort of providing some feedback to Waste Management for discussion before we finalize the report. And that's an opportunity for Waste Management to be responsive to some of the things that we're raising. So that, that is the process. And in terms of recommendations, they are similar to last year. Let me just pull them up here. So the recommendations are that the township direct are affirmed to provide a copy of this draft review to Waste Management for discussion purposes. That they implement the recommendations of our reports, so that includes the landscape report, the air quality report, surface water quality, landfill engineering, and noise. And that they address all of the comments with respect to the financial audits, that, that's the one done by William Day or Bill Day. And that we have a follow up meeting in the, in the, well, I guess it would be the winter of twenty twenty five. Sorry, that's a typo there, to discuss further improvements to the complaints process. That's this meeting that I was talking about to continue that conversation. And then that this be brought forward to council at a future meeting, which I think is going to be September to be approved as, as final. So those are the recommendations that we're putting forward. I would just ask that that one typo be fixed, that the one that needs to be fixed is it says, and that the township requests a follow up meeting with WM in the winter of twenty twenty four, and that should be the winter of twenty twenty five. With that, those, that's the, the recommended resolution for council to consider.
Okay, well, thank you, Alex. How does council wish to deal with the proposed resolution from our lawyers? Councillor Morris?
I make a motion to accept the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second or? Councillor Westgate seconding that? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor? That is carried. All right. Well, thank you very much, Alex. Enjoy the rest of your day. Try to keep cool.
Good to see you all. Take care.
Okay, council. We're gonna go to our second delegation. We have we have Brian Kavanoff, the principal from Infra Level Inc, AMP, and he has a presentation for us today. So want to come up, please, Brian? Get your setup up here? Okay, whenever you're ready, Brian, we'll give the floor to you, sir.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor Case, members of council and town staff. I'm pleased to provide you this afternoon with an update on the results of the asset management plan that's recently been completed. When I started this assignment, I took the opportunity to spend some time in the community. I wanted to get a feel for your, your infrastructure and your community. I drove a lot of your roads. I walked through the parks, had the opportunity to inspect all of your facilities from, from roof to basement and everything in between, and it kind of left me with a feeling, an overall feeling for your infrastructure, and that feeling was that it's been well maintained, that you're, you're doing well, that you're committed to asset management, and I had that initial feel, and I was curious to see how that would play out through the course of this project. And I'd say that there is a correlation there, and I'll provide more information on the details as we go through this presentation. It's Ontario Regulation five eighty eight seventeen that governs this process. It's quite prescriptive. In twenty nineteen, In two thousand and nineteen, there was a requirement to complete an asset management policy. So you were compliant with that and a few months early in getting that done. And that really frames the rest of the work that's been done since. In two thousand and twenty two, your first asset management was required to be completed for your core assets. Those core assets being your water, your wastewater, your stormwater, your roads, bridges and culverts. And once again, you are ahead of the curve there. You completed that work in two thousand and twenty. The next two, two thousand and twenty four and two thousand and twenty five, those are the requirements that are being addressed through this asset management plan. The two thousand and twenty four requirements being that we include all assets in the plans. We've added your facilities, your fleet, your machinery and equipment, as well as your land improvements. The two thousand and twenty five requirements are such that we need to include proposed levels of service. And I'll define that for you and dig into that in a few slides. But the theme on this page is that you've been ahead of the curve and you've been early on everything. And I'm impressed with the diligence that you've used to get there. I'm not going to read through all this. But the general overview here is that you have a lot of really good planning documents in place. I've done a lot of this work and it's rare that you see a list as complete as this one. It makes my job a lot easier, takes a little time to go through these reports, but it's it's encouraging when the planning is there. And I'd say that the work that I do is only as good as the information that goes into it. And it's encouraging that you've got all the right information in place. This is an overview of of the asset management plan itself and the details that I'll run through in brief over the next few minutes. The state of local infrastructure is is your baseline or your foundation. The levels of service, both current and proposed, I'll run through that. We've completed a detailed risk management process. I'll run you through the process and the results of that. The lifecycle management strategy as well, the growth impacts largely informed through your DC background study. The financial strategy that ties in all the requirements that are addressed through this process. And finally, recognizing that asset management is never complete, we'll run through some ideas around advancing asset management maturity and some initiatives that will help you progress as you go. So the state of infrastructure, there's three questions under this topic, the first being what assets does the township own? And there's a list here. As I mentioned, this plan requires that all of your assets be addressed. Secondly, what condition are the assets in? Ideally, using condition assessments, and we've done that wherever possible. And thirdly, how much are the assets worth? Using published information or published inflation values and other means, which I'll dig into in a slide or two. Your asset replacement value, we have a total here of three hundred and seventeen point two million. And I wanted to note that four years ago, when your asset management plan was done, the total was around two hundred million. So it's a significant increase in the valuation of your assets. And I'll quickly run through the reasons why. First off, I think we're all familiar that inflation has been significant over the past four years to the tune of about thirty two percent. So that's a significant portion of this increase that's that's caused by inflation. We have included your gravel roads in this exercise. Previously, that was not the case. But gravel roads are a significant asset that you put a lot of time and effort into maintaining. And those assets provide significant value to your residents. So we have included the twenty million or some odd value of your gravel roads in this assessment. We've also included new assets. You've built ELCC since the date of the last assessment and many other assets have been added as well. And finally, there were some assets that even with inflation didn't seem to be quite right in terms of their valuation. An example being your fire fleet. If we tacked on thirty two percent to the previous value, it just isn't in the realm of of being a reasonable estimate on what they're worth today. They've just taken on a life of their own in terms of the the price and the time it takes to get them. But we've made an effort to incorporate real values from real purchases in this area over the last six months or so. And that lands us at three hundred and seventeen million. I mentioned that for asset condition, the ideal scenario is that we have inspections that have been done, which gives us a high confidence in the data that we have. You'll notice that for roads, for bridges and culverts, as well as buildings, we do have inspected condition information, and that's fantastic. You're doing well with that. For the remaining assets, we've used age as a proxy for condition, which gives us a little bit less confidence, but it's essentially the best that we've got. So you'll see the range of conditions. There's some land improvements and fleet where your assets are a little bit older and the age of those assets is translating into a poor condition. Many other assets, the remaining assets really are in fair or good condition. And we've used a weighted valuation methodology to come up with an average condition, which is good overall. So in that sense, you're doing quite well in terms of your asset management and your replacement schedules and your investments to land with an overall good condition. Proposed levels of service drive the requirements for two thousand and twenty five. Those proposed levels of service have mainly been derived from your strategic plan, your master plans and your annual budgets. Those are essentially the planning documents that introduce new initiatives. I've listed a few examples. I believe it's your strategic plan that drives the climate change adaptation plan that's being undertaken. We've included targets for asset condition, really a percentage of assets that will be in fair or better condition with diligent maintenance. We've recommended that you make further inroads on using inspections to derive the condition of certain assets. For example, wastewater and stormwater assets would benefit from CCTV inspections. From your strategic plan as well, we have building energy reduction targets. And finally, on the environmental front, we have some tree planting. We completed a detailed risk assessment. I had the pleasure of going line by line through about twenty three hundred assets and assigning to those assets a likelihood of failure based largely around age as well as a consequence of failure. So looking at how important or critical those assets are. We've identified risks essentially that may result in loss or reduction in service. That's obviously very important to your community. Personal injury, we've got to keep things safe. Environmental impacts, financial setbacks, reputational impacts, a lot of the things that that drive the municipality to deliver for residents. This resulted in a prioritized list of projects. And I won't through won't run through the whole list, but just some some general themes. There were a few safety related items made note of as part of the road assessment work. There were some safety related items that should be addressed as a result of the building inspections. And finally, some aged items, aged fire fleet, for example, that should be addressed in the near term. Lifecycle management strategy is a significant component of asset management planning. To the left, you see the lifecycle activities from acquisition. And I'll use a roads example just to take you through this. So acquisition for roads essentially means new construction, whether it's the township building roads or or developers doing it on your behalf, followed by assumption. We'd follow that with operations and maintenance, and that could be pothole filling. It could be line painting, it could be shouldering, that type of thing. Rehabilitation such as micro surfacing. And finally, replacement, which would be a mill and pave, pulverize and pave or a or a complete reconstruction of a road. Disposal, we don't see too much of that from a road perspective, but you could in theory remove a road. And then finally, the non-infrastructure solutions, which would be investments into planning, master plans, condition assessments, those sorts of things. The chart to the right may not be fully legible, but I'll I'll give you a rundown of just the theme of this chart. I think it's a bit of old school thinking to to say that we're going to build a road and then in twenty years, we're going to come back and we're going to replace it. That's that's very expensive and it's disruptive to residents. The more diligent approach is to introduce much more minor and more cost effective solutions along the way, or interventions. So at the five year mark, we're doing some crack sealing, for example. At the ten year mark, maybe we're doing some some patch repairs, we're doing some potholes, localized minor replacements. And we're repeating that every few years such that we don't have failure of the road system and we don't have to do a much more costly repair. And this type of chart could be prepared for any asset, really. And it's just to say that diligent maintenance goes a long way. It's much more cost effective. And it provides better results for your residents. We'll run through the the numbers and the the financial findings of our assessment. The chart to your left includes the funding requirements, the lifecycle costs that are required for each of these asset classes over the next ten years to maintain a state of good repair. That totals about thirty three point two million dollars. Moving to the chart on the right side, we have that funding need of thirty three point two million. We compare that to the funding amount that's available at twenty nine point six million. And the difference between those numbers is the funding gap valued at three point six million over ten years or three hundred and sixty thousand per year. And it's important to consider the magnitude of that number and and how that number compares to similar municipalities in this area and across Southern Ontario. And I I read a lot of reports, I prepare a lot of reports, and I would suggest that this number is is quite encouraging. This number is far lower than than a lot of the numbers that I see across Southern Ontario. So that is is a positive. I'd also add that using age based data, as I mentioned earlier, can sometimes overstate the requirements. Assets can often be old, but still in good condition. So my hypothesis is that as you gather more conditioned data, that this gap would actually shrink. So it's a manageable number and it's perhaps a little bit overstated. We've considered various ways and as required by the regulation, we've looked at how to bridge this funding gap. There's some ways that are more painful than others. It's you obviously want to avoid significant tax rate increases. You want to keep your services reasonable in terms of affordability for your residents. And having reviewed your options and working with your treasurer, we've determined that the projected growth of your own own source revenues over the next several years will be more than enough to bridge this gap. So it's not adding new increases or new fees. It's working with what you've got and with trends that you've already got in place that will more than address this relatively small funding gap. In addition to that, we've recommended a few items to minimize the gap. For example, implementing operational efficiencies, enhancing asset condition data, as I mentioned, improving or adding to your O and M activities so that we're doing more operations and maintenance and less costly repairs. Seeking additional grant funding, as I'm sure is always on your radar. And then finally, considering the implementation of a stormwater rate. I should mention that all of those items were for your tax supported infrastructure and keeping separate your water and wastewater infrastructure that I'll run through now, differentiated, of course, by the the funding mechanisms. On the left, we have the ten year funding needs totaling about four point eight million dollars over ten years. On the right, and in this case, it's a surplus, your funding needs are less than the funding available. Funding available being about seven point five million. And that provides us with a funding surplus of about two point six million dollars or two hundred and sixty six thousand annually. And what we found, because we really wanted to dig into this number to understand the ten year evaluation period, but also what's going to happen in a longer term sense. And with your municipality, the infrastructure for water and wastewater being relatively new, what we're finding is that over the next ten years, your capital requirements are not that significant. The significant work is going to start after year ten. So what we've looked at is running the numbers with a five percent annual increase for water and wastewater fees. And where where that would get you from years, say, ten through twenty. And what we're finding is that you do have a surplus from years one through ten. However, that surplus becomes close to zero after we factor in the longer term and increased capital requirements. So you're doing well in the short term and you'll continue to do well as long as you increase or rather provide continued five percent increases. So it's a continuation of your current trends. A brief summary. I would say that the township has made significant investments that have led to an overall good condition of your assets. It's encouraging that you've invested diligently. You have strong governance in place to guide that decision making. The funding gap is relatively small compared to your neighbors in Southern Ontario in general. That gap can be bridged in a not too painful way with the growth of own source revenues. For your rate supported assets, you have a surplus, which is encouraging. And I would encourage you to commit that surplus to reserves. So that when you get past that ten year mark and your capital requirements increase, you'll be in good shape. And finally, the asset management plan that's been prepared is compliant with both the two thousand and twenty four and the two thousand and twenty five requirements of Oreg five eighty eight seventeen. And I would suggest that you are maybe not the first, but you're well ahead of the curve in reaching compliance with the two thousand and twenty five requirements. So you continue to to be ahead there and that is encouraging as well. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Does anybody have any questions? For our guest? You ready?
Yes, please, Councilman Manning.
So this is just a quick question on the risk assessment, the list there you made of things that you take into consideration. You talk about prioritizing. And not to say that this list you made is in order, but I'm just curious, the personal injury falls second on your list. Where does it actually fall in prioritizing while going forward?
Just one moment as I flip. Okay, there we go. Personal injury, I would suggest that of that list of six, personal injury would be number one. Safety for residents is the most important thing and the list has been prioritized as such.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just saw it number two on there and I just wanted to address that. And does that also include our workers too and our staff?
Yeah, safety is, I'd say, equally important for both. And that's been considered for the the folks who work on the infrastructure and also those who who benefit from its usage.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great. Did anybody else have any questions? Council Morse?
Just wondered if you could explain what a stormwater rate is. Like, are you charging so much for the residents there? And if we put that in, how good would that help us with the shortfall?
So a stormwater So a stormwater rate can be implemented in a number of ways, but the, the general idea is that, um, for water and for wastewater, for example, it's, it's essentially mandated that you charge a rate and people pay based on, on what they use and it's intended and required that it, uh, be sustaining of itself financially. Um, what that ensures is that for water and wastewater, you'll always have enough money to, to fund those assets. Uh, what a lot of municipalities are, are starting to do is, is take that same sort of theme and apply it to stormwater. In the sense that oftentimes stormwater assets sometimes move down the priority list a little bit and don't necessarily get funded to the extent that they should. So that's the general, um, the basis behind it. In terms of how it's implemented, um, uh, the ones that I've worked on in the past and a number that I've seen are, are quite simple. It's for any residents and I, I would think that in your municipality, it's the residents that um, have frontage to a storm sewer system or, or a ditch system that requires, um, maintenance and operations that, that they would contribute, um, to essentially funding that infrastructure. And the connection between how much they should pay, how much they benefit can be handled in various ways and the, the most simplest being a, a flat rate per, per residence. Uh, although I've seen some resident or some municipalities, I should say, who look at the, the perme- permeability of, of the land and the land area, uh, that's owned and um, a little bit more complicated calculations as to how much, uh, an individual landowner may, may pay. So there's different models, different ways of doing it, but the general idea is to prioritize stormwater funding and, uh, to ensure that it is, uh, is always funded. Uh, in terms of how much that would impact, um, your particular funding gap. I think that your stormwater assets are close or relatively close to being fully funded, so I wouldn't suggest that it's a major short-term problem. But I would think that as those assets age, it would become increasingly important to dedicate funding to those assets. So the benefit of a stormwater rate would increase over time.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Cavanaugh? Yes, Councilman Manning.
So in the, um, the forecast of the funding gap there, the 10-year, uh, the 10-year funding needed to the 10-year funding gap, um, did you take into consideration, um, the inflation, if so, what rate were you using for the, uh, for the funding needed?
So these are all in current dollars, so it's brought to current dollars and in that sense, it's, it's not inflated. So it's, uh, it's all twenty-two-four dollars.
Would inflation have an impact on that in 10 years from now?
Um, you would find that, um, over time with inflation, um, obviously everything would get more expensive and there would be a balancing act between your revenue source growth. For example, um, your revenue, your taxation to residents, uh, would, you would likely have that increase either similar to inflation perhaps. And, um, I, I would suggest likely your, your fees for services for residents, uh, would be increasing as well and then perhaps a similar, um, value to inflation. So in that sense, um, they're both unknown, so we, we kind of strip away both. But in general terms, um, a, as far as your financial management goes, you would look to address inflation through those increases to your revenues.
That'd be above and beyond the 5% proposal?
I think the 5% would stay flat at, at 5%, that's the, the model that we've used, so that 5% would not, uh, increase over time.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Just Council Westgate.
In the water part, did you include our share of laws in there?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Anybody else? The other questions from Mr. Cavanaugh? Can't see any. All right, I did have an opportunity, there's not an ask here, uh, with this presentation, but I had a chance to talk to the CAO and, as well as the treasurer. And I think it would be appropriate that maybe we consider a motion to approve this study at this time. Uh, how does council wish to deal with this item? Deputy Mayor, are you making that motion? Second it by Counselor Manning. Any further discussion of any? Seeing none, all in favor? That's great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, counsel, I'm going to move us ahead in the agenda if I could, please. We're going to go to number 13, if we could, and this is, uh, reports, uh, and items requiring a motion. The first one is 13A and it's action correspondence, there's two pieces of action correspondence. Before us, the first one is, uh, zero-six dash four-zero and it's the Watford Youth Activity Club asking for their yearly donation. I guess we've done this in the past. Uh, how does council wish to deal with the request?
It's in our budget, is it not?
Yeah, well, that's the other housekeeping item, we got to do on both of these items. We need to make a motion to, to put them on the annual list because they're not on there. So we will take care of that as well with a motion at the end, but we'll deal with them individually first if we could. Councilor Morse, you making that motion? Do we have a seconder? Deputy Mayor Callenberg, all in favor? That's carried. And then the second piece of business, uh, before us is zero-six four-one, Central Lampton, uh, Recruitment Committee Donation. Um, how does council wish to deal with this particular one? This is something we've done in the past as well. Thank you, Councilman Manning is moving that, seconded by Counselor Westgate. All in favor? Carried. Now we'd ask for a motion that we put both of these items on our, our yearly list to make it easier. Councilor Morse, thank you, is making that motion, seconded by Counselor Manning, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Little housekeeping, all taken care of now. Let's go to 13B if we can. And this is the, uh, building permit, uh, fee review. And, uh, that's there for council's consideration, there's a recommendation attached to that as well. Uh, any questions or comments on that piece of business from council? Seeing none, there is a recommendation to approve, how does council wish to deal with that recommendation? Moved by Counselor Westgate, seconded by Counselor Morris. Any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Let's go to see if we can then. This is the potential lease of the former municipal office, this is something that I believe Deputy Mayor Callenberg brought up in our last budget discussions. And there is a report there, uh, with a recommendation to receive and file, any questions on this particular piece of correspondence? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that you took the time to go through, uh, I think that's what we were wanting to see if there was a possibility. When I look at the report, I don't feel there is a possibility. I think they're making very good use of the space that's there, you know, those two little offices, so be it. But, uh, I think it, it was nice and neat and tidy, did you give my heads up before you walked through? No, no, I, I, I just, I thought there may be some potential there, but, uh, based on the report, I, I think it's being utilized good as is, so just a comment.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, so there is a recommendation to receive and file, Deputy Mayor?
I'll move.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Manning, all in favor? That's carried, thank you very much. Let's go to D if we could, reallocation of investing in Canada, of the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. And there's also a suggested motion to go along with that. How does council wish to deal with this piece of business? Questions or comments? Okay. There is a suggested, uh, motion here and it's an awful lot, everybody sees it? Okay. How does council wish to deal with the recommendation? Counselor Morris?
Um, I want to make the motion direct to accept it, I would have one question for Trevor. What are the, any idea in what our odds are? Which way it's going to go?
Good question, um, no, we've spoken to them, they're very receptive of what we're planning to do. They asked for council resolution for the support it. We're doing the steps to, and I think there is a good chance they support it. However, we have mitigated our risk by looking into other avenues, just in case, and ask for best practice as we tend to do.
Uh, we still haven't done the engineering though, right?
We've done the engineering, it's almost ready to go, yeah.
We have a seconder. Deputy Mayor Callenberg, any further discussion? Seeing none? Yes, Counselor Westgate.
Is there any use putting anything about, we need this to build more houses, the, the province is looking to build more housing and we need that sewer to do that.
We've got that tied into it.
Okay, anybody else before I call the question? See nobody? All in favor? That is carried, thank you. Okay, let's go to E if we can, asset retirement obligations. And there's a recommendation there. And it's asset retirement obligations and, uh, it's that the council direct hereby approves report F-0724. And that council approves the asset retirement obligation policy and that council authorizes the appropriate bylaw. How does council wish to deal with this recommendation? Counselor Manning, moving, thank you. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Westgate? Any further discussion? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Okay, let's go to F if we can, counsel. And there's a recommendation to this and what the recommendation is, uh, it's, uh, it's a business networking session update and the recommendation is that that the council of the township work receive and file this report, waive the rental fee for the ELCC Lampton Mutual Community Hall to host this event. This is a chamber event, by the way, and that the council of the township Warwick approve up to a twenty-five-hundred-dollar budget to accommodate refreshments for the event. So again, the piece that might not stand out is this is a chamber, a Lampton County, Sarnia Lampton Chamber event that would be held in our community, and I think everybody saw the extra data. How does council wish to deal with this particular recommendation?
I'll make a motion, we support you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Morris? Further discussion of any? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. And then we have an interesting one here. So, we're at G. And, and this is an age-friendly connection cube. Looks like a great big vending machine almost, um, project that the township and there's a recommendation that township council supports the consideration of a connection, a connection cube installation at the ELCC, uh, should the funding application submitted by Lampton Elderly Outreach be successful, so at no cost to us. And I'm sure we're going to have some questions about this. Yes, Counselor Manning?
Oh, it's a pretty basic question, but what is it? I read through the report and it's, it's a lot of words, but I don't know exactly what, what does this do?
Ryan, you get to take this one, we're all just, we can hardly wait to hear your responses.
All right, thank you, uh, through the mayor, it's Counselor Manning. Um, essentially, uh, much of what I know is included in this report. Um, but essentially, it's, it's a hub, um, that allows the community to come in and navigate, it's a safe space for the community to come in, uh, navigate social and health services, uh, a meeting, a meeting space, a private space, um, and, and for those within the community that maybe don't have access to telephone, access to the internet. Um, a great way to, to learn some of the social services that are available, health services that are available within the community, within the county. Um, it just provides that safe space, that private space, um, for individuals to come in and, and and like I mentioned, to access, uh, those services. Um, it would be at no cost to the, to the county or some, maybe some minimal costs for startup, um, on our end. Um, in terms of ensuring there's electrical provided and telephone services, wifi services. Those costs would be minimal and would be part of our, um, parks annual operating, uh, by council. It is contingent on a funding application that's been submitted by, uh, Leo, Lampton Elderly Outreach. Um, they are popping up in communities around the county, there's one at the, uh, uh, Sarnia Library. Um, for anybody who wanted to, to take a look and, and see what it, what it is, um, we would be booking this space as well, um, but again, that can be part of our, our parks and recreation, um, uh, workflow. Yes, that is essentially, uh, what it is.
Yes, Counselor Morris.
Well, thank you, that explains a lot of it. You said about booking, will there be a charge for somebody to use this?
Uh, thank you, and that's a great question, Counselor Morris. Um, no, there would not be a charge. Um, the booking process would just be if somebody wanted a specific time slot or opportunity to be in that space, we could, we could block that off for the, for their use.
I guess the one thing I'm worried about, if you're talking about putting this in the ELCC or in the arena, I take it? Um, is hockey tournaments, I see it a great place for kids to go crash. Is it going to be locked? Are you, how are you going to control access, et cetera?
Uh, yes, and again, Counselor Morris, that's a great question. Um, it is controllable, it does have, we do have the ability to, to lock it off, to block it off. Um, and I think that would be our intent, uh, especially on days where there is other, other people, uh, within, within the space. Uh, the idea is definitely to have it located in the ELCC portion, uh, there's a couple spaces, whether that be beside the fireside lounge or down the corridor, uh, outside the change rooms.
Counselor Manning?
Yeah, so now that I know what it does, I just got a couple logistic, uh, questions on it. Number one is who would be in charge of maintenance, would that fall under our, uh, money basically, or would that be the county? Uh, number two, what kind of strain do you foresee this on your staff for operating it? Like, is there going to be a lot of extra care going to this, uh, unit? And then you kind of answered where it was going to go, but next I'm wondering what your opinion is on where it's going to be located. Is it going to be, like, or is it going to be a strain on, uh, ELCC and the flow of everything there?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Counselor Manning, great questions as well. Um, the two locations that I mentioned are, are the top, um, spots for consideration. They fit within the flow, fit within the traffic of the ELCC, so I don't foresee any issues on that front. Um, the operating costs. So the installation, as I mentioned, covered by the funding application, as are some of the startup costs, initial startup costs. I see any future, uh, maintenance ongoing support that would fall under the responsibility of the township uh, under the Parks and Recreation Department. I see it as being very minimal, to be honest with you, um, and something that can just be folded into our existing operating, um, accounts. Um, and was there another question?
Uh, yes, the strain on the staff, that's true.
Yes, and in terms of staffing, um, I think again, that's minimal as well. Um, I don't foresee the booking process to be too strenuous on, on our staff, myself and Emily. Uh, would be able to handle that quite easily. And it would take a little bit of cleaning every once in a while, a sweep out, a wipeout, or a clean of the windows. Uh, but again, I see that as, as minimal and something that our existing, uh, staff team can, can certainly accommodate.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Did anybody else have any questions? It is something a little bit different, there's no doubt about it, it's good to know there isn't one at the Sarnia Library. I guess there must be, obviously there's a purpose of privacy and being able to access some services, uh. How does council wish to deal with the recommendation, again, based on funding? Anybody interested? Counselor Morris?
I'll make a motion that we proceed with this as long as there's no cost for the initial connection tube and the initial connection tube installation.
Do we have a seconder to that motion? Counselor Manning? Further discussion of any? Call the question, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Ryan. And there's no new business that I know about, is I correct? I know, Madam Clerk, we don't have any, any counselor? Thank you. Okay, that ends the, uh, that ends the open session of our meeting. Uh, we are now going to break from you two, and we've had some technical difficulties today, there's no doubt about that. But anyways, we've managed to get through it, so I'm going to ask for a motion, uh, to move into an in-camera meeting of council pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act of 2001 as amended for the following reasons. Number two and eleven, can I have a motion, please? Counselor Manning, thank you. And Counselor Westgate, thank you, seconding that, all in favor, that is done, thank you. And Counselor Westgate, thank you, seconding that, all in favor, that is done, thank you.